It's Monday, October 16th. Since it's six o'clock, let's call this meeting in order. Please be advised this meeting is being recorded. And first, we're continuing the public hearing about 96 Menand Road, Daughters of Charity. Matt, you wanna?
A little update?
Yeah, a little update on where we are and then we'll take any further comments.
The village and the village just received a response from the applicants dated October 6th. We'll be able to review and turn around our response letter by the 27th and we've scheduled a a meeting with the applicants on the 25th just to go over some any hanging issues that we find that we want to address and kind of move towards consideration of the project at the next village board meeting.
So 11-6 we're targeting the board vote or site plan approval?
Correct. Right. So granted, we haven't got through all their application revised materials yet, but we're on track and if there's an ability to condition certain items for Google, we'll do that. But that's going to be part of the discussion on the 25th.
We did get back the Albany County Planning Board letter.
Yes, they gave that a thumbs up.
Yes. Just a couple of things to ensure compliance with transportation because it does exit and enter upon a state road. And then some Town of Colony notices regarding Town of Colonies jurisdiction.
Yeah, I checked with Don, all of the referrals for the public hearings went out to each of the communities or ones that were within the environment.
The third item is the review by Albany County regarding the availability of water, wastewater and other such things.
Yep. And I'll just double check with Lauren to make sure that that's been addressed.
Sound good. Does anyone from the, was it Matt?
Yep.
Anyone from the public have any further comments about 96 Menand Road?
When will the construction start, you know?
No idea.
I can't speak.
Will create any new jobs?
There would be some type of construction jobs, but that's, those are questions.
But no permanent ones?
That's a question for the applicant. I would imagine there'd be some additional onsite stuff.
Maybe one dozen. Well, like I said before, and I was saying before, I do support this general welfare and health project, well, for health, general welfare, public safety and social reasons. So I'd like to see it done as soon as possible. Thanks.
Thanks, Bill.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Daughters of Charity? Okay, so I closed the public hearing on Daughters of Charity. Next up is 50-56 Clifford Road continuation of a public hearing. On Clifford Road. Matt, you wanna?
Sure.
Do the same thing?
Yeah, a little update here. So last week on October 13th, we provided the applicant with a second round of comments. And the applicant, Dominic Arico, reached out to us and would like to schedule a meeting with the village staff. And we'll look into, try to schedule that sometime next week. So there was a couple of items that I know were discussed in the public hearings. Previously, one about traffic and another about stormwater. So the traffic, we checked with our traffic engineers. And the applicant only predicted, I think it was a dozen trips at the peak hour. And traffic study is not going to be required unless you're proposing about a hundred trips at the peak hour. So our engineers feel that the traffic situation is fine. The road is posted. It has speed limit on that. And so there's no concerns regarding that. And we expect the stormwater, the applicant will be providing a stormwater plan that is less than an acre. So they do not have to provide a swift stormwater prevention plan under state requirements. But we're confident that they can adequately handle the stormwater given where the site pitches to the northeast away from Clifford Road and adjoining residences and will design an appropriate stormwater system at that point to back end to the property. So granted, they have provided the stormwater elements and they did indicate that they would do that after preliminary subdivision preliminary site plan approval. And we feel that that's fine. There are some additional things they have to check on in terms of water in the sewer, making sure that that the county can accept that additional flow and that a few of the water elements, we have some outstanding questions. If those can be adequately addressed, they can get, at least be on the agenda for preliminary site plan approval. Either next meeting or the meeting after, but we'll have to see once we have that conversation with them on how far along they are.
Okay. And we also received the Albany County Planning Board's letter, basically deferring to the village for its consideration for most of the for the recommendation that's really a, and this board has found that the proposed action will have no impact on jurisdictional determinate referring to this case, nor will it have a significant countywide or in municipal impact.
Now, we'd also requested elevations for the buildings or proposing that
We did give those to provide. Last week. So he had indicated he had provided those to the board?
No.
Okay.
We didn't say anything. Did you see any of those?
Okay. So there, so as we get application materials in, we can dump everything in the Google Drive. So let me know if you guys have any problems accessing that. Those elevations should be in there.
Can you check out that, use that link again, please?
Sure. But they're black and white elevations. I think we can get some clarification on their intended side colors.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of important to the whole.
Yes. No, we would not just accept the black and white. We would have need what color is, um, just to make sure that we can exist in front of it in there. So we're aware that that's going to happen.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments from the public regarding 50-56 Clifford Road? Bill?
Bill Evans, I live on Wolford Avenue. I mentioned before, previous board meetings and during these forums that basically opposed to the project on that Clifford Avenue. I want to remind the board that the residents that were here, the neighbors, were also opposed to it. Looking for some kind of input from the board moving forward on what, where you stand with this whole project and and how you feel that might be a benefit. I just wanted to mention again. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else on Clifford Road? All right. Close the public hearing. Start a regular meeting, 6:08. We need approval for the minutes from previous meeting Tuesday, October 2nd.
Make a motion?
Thank you.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye. Is anyone opposed?
Warrant number 9X, check was returned for 599 and check, another check was written for 420. So a total of 179 will be credited. Warrant number 10. $164,934.92. Water, $6,125.43 totaling $75,070.44. Then adult transfers.
And I think, take a motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
There was a meter, a problem with the meter at 22 Dutch Village and it was read incorrectly. There was actually two meters or side by side that were read incorrectly. So they need a, they need a resolution to approve the return, the adjustment of $35,915.85 for water and $13,606.97 for sewer.
They were read wrong by who? Us or them?
Well, it was it, there's a, it was both of us. It was actually, we read the meters. So it was us. It was, it was a
So they just have the manual old meters?
Yes. And that, they're in the process with their next budget that they're going to replace all the meters in the place that they have with the radio read ones. But right now, this is, it was a problem in the readings.
Their meters are very, very old.
I just was curious because we just had this with the gardens, but that was them reading it. So that's why I was curious.
Yeah, that, we had, we go in and read the meter. I, Nicole explained it to me. Did you, if I remember this correctly, because this was a couple of weeks ago.
Can we table this until we can get some kind of, I don't know, how did, that's a, that's a large sum.
So there's two meters and one meter is first and then excess flow goes to the second meter. If they reversed.
That's what, that's what it was. They were, they, there was a high and a low, high, high service, low service and then it was read reversed.
Oh, so they get a meter for each of the reservoirs?
No, 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 no. For their building as a, as a dual meter. And it goes.
Dutch Village needs to invest in new meters that are electronically read.
Yeah, obviously.
And it's expensive. And so one of the things that we need to discuss as a board is making sure that those meters get changed out on a regular schedule so that we don't have these issues with a 50-year-old meter running slowly or not being recorded correctly. So it's, it's, if we look at the village's procedures and policies for this now, the fine for doing this is minimal. It's not worth their expense. They'd rather pay the fine of $50 per period. So that's something that we need to enforce better. And in the meantime, we're sort of trying to catch up with them. Because we don't own those meters. The commercial meters are owned and installed by those.
And the problem is with the older buildings, each building has their own meter and they got so that's, that's
So were they the ones that caught our error?
This is, this is, this one, we, they actually caught the error because they do a meter reading each month. And then the trend went from being even to all spiking up like this. So we're
But also something we need to look at, like especially for Dutch Village, that there's someone there from their team when we're reading the meters to make sure that full, they're agreeing.
Well, actually, there's a procedure now where when David goes in to read it, he's taking a photograph of it with the tablet. And that's what they're going to do with every commercial meter they read, they have to read.
I, I also was thinking maybe, and this is a legal question of like how we can have someone from their team also there agreeing so they're not coming back a month later and saying, oh, no, 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 when we did our reading, here's the picture our employee took and it's different.
Well, they have to let them into the, so there's someone there with them.
So the, the issue with letting this bill sit is, is will it re-levee if they don't pay it? So
So they haven't paid us any money yet?
That's correct. Because the bill is, the bill is erred for this particular account.
They, they actually brought this to our attention a month and a half ago, two months ago. But Nicole and them have been working to try and figure out what, what happened. And that's when, that's when Nicole came up with.
We can table it if, if
Just to LAC, at least see Nicole's calculations.
Sure.
Is that okay? Thanks.
Actually, oh yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll table it till the next meeting and all right, we're gonna table number five till the next meeting. We'll handle number eight first. I'd like to introduce our newest officer, Joseph Murray. There's Joseph. He has moved here. You want to tell a little bit about yourself?
I'm good.
Sure. We hired him effective, what, today?
Today was my first full day. Yes. Nice to meet you guys. I come from down south, Carroll, Catskill area. Just moved up into like the Woodlake Commons area or something like that. That's where the department is. Excited to be here. Everybody seems super nice. I've met a minimal amount of people, but so far it seems like a pretty nice village. So hopefully I'll get to know everybody individually soon enough.
You're welcome here.
Thanks, bud.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I wish you well.
Thank you.
Good luck.
See you, Sandra.
Thanks, Joe. The fire department wants to, they had their elections and they did the criminal background checks on the filing people. Gavin Clamie. Brian Lamar, Joseph Manford. And they will ask for approval for support for like an active method.
Yeah.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay. Tonight, we have Brian Savoda from ABS here to talk about, we want to switch from Google to Microsoft 365 for security reasons and to be on a better platform and make, get rid of some minor glitches we're having. So if you want to explain the platform to the board or
Sure. Do you need to propose this to? To propose this at the time before you went?
Yeah.
I got it. Thank you.
Oh, actually, no. I have the old one, not the new one.
All right.
We talked about it.
So we put together a proposal for Microsoft 365, their government platform, which is the more secure tenant that Microsoft offers for their email and collaboration platform. And we put together a proposal that basically covers email, Microsoft Office, Teams and their SharePoint platform for sharing files or sending emails similar to Google Drive. And we've also included our proposal for the migration to basically emails, files, things like that that kind of familiarize in Google Drive and pick us up, move them into the Microsoft platform. We also included a proposal for some additional email security by a company called Barracuda. The village already currently uses Barracuda Security. We're just augmenting that with some additional features and functionality from them in terms of security for bad guys who log into your mailbox and well as additional FOIL searching capabilities and other other security features that Barracuda offers to, to secure the platform. Let's see what else we have. And then obviously our migration labor to pick up all of the stuff that you guys have and move that into the Microsoft platform. So that's, that's basically what's in place in the proposal we have here.
Should everything transfer without problems? So if I have a resolution that I issued maybe a year ago and it's in a Google Doc, will there be any issues and opening in dealing with those going forward?
Can I make the 100% guarantee that we will grab every possible file in every setting? There's always small files that sometimes do not migrate. I'm not, to be honest, there's a chance that those things might not migrate correctly, but by and large, every migration we've done, there's a 99.9% of the things come over the way you want them. Obviously, it's going to look different because it's in Microsoft Outlook or Microsoft Word. But the Word documents, the PDF files, the emails that you sent, we're going to pick those things up and move them over to the Microsoft platform.
Okay. Will our Chromebooks operate using Microsoft 365?
So with the Microsoft, the sign into the Chromebook right now, that would stay the same because that's a Google account that you're signing in with.
Yeah.
But once you sign in, you can use, you log into the Microsoft website, the portal.office.com page. Sign in there and you click on the button for your email, click on the button for Word documents or your OneDrive. You kind of navigate around that way.
Okay. But will, will it operate the, I guess, the same, I mean, it's going to be a Microsoft platform, obviously. But like I log into this and it's automatically, it automatically takes me there. If I choose, you know, if I choose email, like it, it takes me there. I don't have to keep logging in. Is there a way to where you log into your Chromebook and you're automatically logged into 365?
So that we can set ultimately the Chromebook, we're going to be moving away from the Google identity or that Google password. So they, they're still going to be separate accounts?
But I mean, is there a way when I open my Chromebook and I log in, that rather than logging into a Google account, I'm logging into, logging into a Microsoft account and it automatically comes up?
So the, the issue is that, that first account's a Google account?
Yeah.
That account would have to stay. Because if I do a Google Chromebook, you have to have a Google account for that to function. Once you, once you get logged in, then you, the Chrome pa, the homepage that you land on would be your Microsoft page. And that would, once you've signed in once, most Chromebooks are pretty good about remembering who you are and it'll keep you signed in at that point.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So we wouldn't need new hardware? You wouldn't recommend?
So the, I, for what you got, the way you guys use your Chromebooks now to basically log in and access email and access files and things like that, for what you guys do, that, that would, can stay, stay the same. And even for the, for the village, the police department, village side of things, the hardware they have now, it will be fine.
Okay. Now, going, going forward, like, let's say, and you get a new board member, is there a because I know Chromebook is a Google thing, is there a Microsoft book?
There's a Microsoft Surface. I, it's really about, they put a lot of any, you know, Dell or HP laptop. I've not really found anything fantastic about them. So I, I would tend to look at a, you know, low-cost Microsoft laptop or my, low-cost Dell or HP laptop will be fine.
Okay. Because I know like these, like there's no, it's not much of a hard drive. Autumn, you don't need it. It's all cloud-based. I didn't know.
You can, you can continue to use Chromebooks because a lot of what we're talking about is going to be files in the cloud, just like they are now. It's just a different cloud essentially. So yeah, you could continue to use Chromebooks or if you wanted to do a, you know, stick with a Microsoft platform, you could do a Dell or HP like I said.
Okay.
Ryan, can you go back and talk about some of the reasons why we chose the Microsoft platform as a, as a, you know, a more robust tool when we're talking about some of the things like migrating to menansny.gov and some of the email changes that we're going to, we're going to talk about?
Sure. We're going to be standardizing on, so right now there's essentially two email domains that exist within the platform. There's villagemenans.com and then menanspolice.com. We're to consolidate that down to one domain, menansy.gov. So that is the branded as a government organization thing looks and feels better as a, when people are in your position or communicating with the village. And in addition, Microsoft, I think, has a lot of good security platforms which will be able to take advantage in terms of preventing baggage from logging in. Making sure that you require multi-factor authentication, all those sort of things we've talked about in the past for securing your email, securing your data. We're going to include those and make sure that we're, we're configuring those as we go forward here. So yeah, I think that there's also a lot of integration that Microsoft offers in terms of using their Teams platform, which is similar to Google Meet, but you can use that on a one-to-one basis or a one-to-many sort of basis. And I think that has a lot of, a lot of capabilities out there.
Want to hit that question?
Oh, sorry.
Can you read it?
What is wrong with this current security? I'm not sure there's anything necessarily wrong with that. The, the settings, we do, we do have a multi-factor policy currently enabled. It honestly has the zero trust feature turned on, but we have the multi-factor feature turned on on the current Google tenant.
Okay. So can you break down your proposal and some of the costs and the, and the difference between the costs that we pay per user for Google versus the cost per, for click of the name?
Sure. So the, the, one advantage, I think, from a, from a flexibility perspective, Microsoft offers different licensing platforms for different levels of users. So that you're able to license a, the water users or police patrol users at one level, which is different than say, a board member is different than say, Don, for example. So that you can have different licensing levels. And if we look at, we add that combination of licenses up, it is more expensive than what you're, what you're spending now. So currently you spend about $4,300 a year, $4,377 for micro, for the Google platform. And plus, because we have to include Microsoft Word and Excel, because a lot of the village folks use the Word and Excel platform. So we add those two together. That's essentially what you're spending for Microsoft plus Google. How is that together? $4,377 plus $1,881, sorry.
Are we adding the Barracuda?
Uh, no, we'll keep that. So $62.58 is essentially what Google and Microsoft cost today. And the proposed Microsoft government platform would be the $7,068. So another $900 difference between the two platforms. So that's the fair comparison of the two. The Microsoft platform, the Barracuda platform, currently you spend $3,182 on the basic Barracuda platform, which is email security and archiving. In addition, we would add in some backup software. There's other components of the Barracuda platform, including backup and what's called Sentinel and some additional security features. So there's, there's basically a $3,000 difference between that for what you're spending today for the additional security and backup, like I said.
Now, some of those additional Barracuda items are to help prevent the phishing attacks and, and some of that.
Correct. Yeah. The phishing attacks and I think one of the big things is Microsoft, and in Google, it's the same thing where if you delete something or delete a user, after a certain point in time, you can't go back and get it. Where the Barracuda platform has much longer retention for both individual files or if you need to bring back somebody's whole OneDrive or SharePoint folder you didn't realize you needed it and we, we removed their account after a period of time. So that back of that, you don't necessarily have that now in the Barracuda, in the, in the Google platform. I think it would be a good thing to include going forward.
Especially when we have to do like the FOIL request. You know, it's a lot easier doing it that way than trying to go, the current way we're doing it now, I think it's, it doesn't come out the way it, it takes hours to do it, going through everybody's email.
And outside of that with like what Susan does with the court and what Nicole does and Cheryl does, everybody's on
Susan, Susan
separate.
Susan's separate. Susan goes through OCA, but everybody else is all
Everybody's
Everybody, right now, everybody's emails are archived. But when you have to go, if someone requests emails for a certain subject, I have to read through every email. I have to go through everybody's email to look for, you know, to see what's, or this way you can search it. Like what?
I meant happy. We've asked for their input on changing
Oh, oh, yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you were saying.
There's also, I'm envisioning a lot more integrations that we can take advantage of the Microsoft platform. So for example, integration with evidence.com, we can tie Microsoft's platform to evidence.com. We can tie Microsoft to, you know, if you switch your accounting platform at some point. A lot of, there's a lot of authentication systems that will talk to this Microsoft 365 so that it becomes kind of a central authentication system, which makes a lot of sense so that we avoid having passwords written down on things and improve overall security.
Okay. Do you have a question?
Yes. What kind of training will be needed to go through this software and what would be the cost in staff time and money?
From a training perspective, we're, we'll, we are going to help we're not necessarily going to provide individual per user training, but we will provide folks on the village departments, probably the department heads, I'm guessing, probably easiest way to do this. You know, help them sign into email, help them sign in to get their authenticator app, their email security setup on their phone. We do all that kind of setup as we're as we're switching over to the platform, we'll, we'll basically help each department make sure that they're familiar with how to do it. And then train, like I said, those department heads, so they need to help individuals that could make it that day that they're familiar with that.
So in changing from one word processing system to another, they're not going to need individual training?
So from a, from a word processing perspective, Greg, around the majority of your word processing
Yeah, they're all the same. The problem is now is some of the some of the computers we bought, we had to buy the licenses for the 365, but the other ones, we had to, we actually bought Microsoft Office and they're outdated. This way with this program, they'll always be current. We don't have to keep buying the licenses. It's a lot cheaper through
It's all cloud-based.
It's all cloud-based.
I think it changes your question. Most, most of your like work product is done in Microsoft Word.
Yeah.
So they're already used to Microsoft Word by themselves.
Okay. So this, so the top, the two top lines are the migration fees for, for basically converting the system. Is that?
Right. So the, the first line is essentially the first year's Right, so the, the first line is essentially the first year's licensing and then the software to perform the migration, which, if you look at it this way, the next year, the Microsoft licensing, seven thousand dollars, so call it a little less than half is, is the actual, um, Microsoft licensing and then the other, other migration software that you need to purchase to make it happen.
Okay, as I remember, Don, yeah, twenty-eight, change, twenty-eight five hundred. Um, did, did Bill investigate whether this was, or a portion of this was an ARPA available?
I believe the part of it can be, but not all of it.
Right, I remember the one-time fees, I think, are allowed, but the.
Well, any one-time fees are allowed under ARPA. The rest of it, anything that's gonna be reoccurring, can't, cannot be used ARPA.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not doing a back and forth here, so, um, does the board want to table this and look into it more?
Yes.
I agree, okay. Brian, can we just keep, keep this discussion open and see about, uh, you know, obviously, some of these costs are a little, uh, challenging.
Sure.
With, uh, other things on the agenda, so, um, we'll just keep talking about, about, uh, about this and table it, perhaps, uh, the next time we feel comfortable with putting a back on the agenda.
That's you, yep.
That's right, okay. All right, thanks, Brian, we're good. Now, you're gonna, we're still gonna pursue the, um, migration to, well, that's not, that's not your piece, that's Sean's piece, correct?
Well, he, that's part of the website.
The website, so the website.
The website is, but the, the, with the email.
Yeah.
The email, that's Brian.
So basically, we, we can't migrate, correct me if I'm wrong, but we can't migrate to the manansny.gov uh, really until we settle the issue of what platform we're going to do that on, otherwise.
We have the paper.
We would be paying another subscription to Google for mail.
You could add manansy.gov to your Google tenant if you wanted to. Um, it's, it's another domain, just like you have many, villageandmanas.com and manaspolices.com. Or, Doc, you've got two domains and then now you've got a third one in there if you wanted to. Um, it's really up to you guys if you want to do it, do it now or do it later. And you can have, you can like your, if you wanted, you had the question about your website, where you could go live with manansy.gov, but still have your email go into your current.
Email address, correct.
That there's, they're really independent of each other.
Okay. But, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have to pay, if we paid for something like, like, for instance, if it was mayor at, at, at manansy.gov, we'd have to subscribe to another year's subscription to Google, correct?
I think so, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
And that was the bet, that was the benefit of moving to our actual domain on exchange is you can create as many email addresses as you want.
It's, it has a better way of handling, all the accounts end to accounts over the past.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Mark.
All right. Let's, uh, move on. Uh, okay, so, um, we've been talking, uh, about some potential candidates for what is required of Fusion to become a Fusion Advisory Board. Um, I've kicked around some names and we got some more names right now. Um, so the Advisory Board needs to have four or five names. So, um, do we wanna consider the whole bunch of names?
Can I give a name?
No. Exactly, no. Uh, this is for people who are gonna have an open mind about Fusion and its operation. Um, it, it, it would be, uh, it would be not beneficial to Fusion, I think, to put somebody whose hashtag is not Fusion on the Advisory Board.
That's not my hashtag.
Well, it's pretty closely related.
Is it appropriate for the board to even be involved in this?
The advice was for the board to make the decision as the municipality, which, which that organization sits, yes.
And this advice came from?
Uh, it came from Oasis, I believe.
My experience with the five-three toward, is it involved members?
Thank you, this isn't the time for, for an open dialogue, okay? We're gonna, we have public comment at the end of the meeting, we can, we can handle those, those comments that then. Um, so how about we have some discussion about the members of the Advisory Board? Um, and, uh, the time commitment that's potentially involved in, in being a member on, on the Advisory Board? And then we can, um, as a group, select.
So I've been asking that, I thought Fusion was gonna provide us with what the expectation is for these people? So if we could get that information, then I think we can move forward with this item.
Okay. Jeff, let's clarify exactly what the commitment is, is, and, uh, and when that, that might start.
So would they just be meeting with their community rep, the one individual that they had identified? Or are they going to have a four or five-person group?
I, I think it's gonna meet as a group, uh, and, and talk about, you know, any issues that come up and, uh, you know, and then report back to the board and, and if there's something that needs to be brought to our attention, then that's the board that would, would do it. Um, so we'll work on that for the next meeting, as they'd like to set that, that up and get that, that board actually started. Um, next is Solar Simplified, Sasha, you on a call?
I sure am.
Okay, so one of the things that we've been talking about is some of the environmental initiatives and, uh, one of them is, uh, providing the ability for others that don't have the ability to put solar panels, like Tim does, on their house to participate in, um, in investing in green energy. And so, uh, Solar Simplified is a company that builds solar farms and, uh, and then sells that energy direct to consumers at a discount compared to what people pay for national grids. So, um, they also have a municipal program that they, uh, work with municipalities that also rewards the municipalities for the signups that they, uh, that they achieve within the municipality based on their marketing campaign. Um, and so, uh, by encouraging people to, uh, to subscribe, to become a participant in the program, uh, the village would get a reward for each of the signups. Um, and so Sasha, I'll let you take it away and kind of describe, um, you know, how the program operates and, and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, you, uh, you've covered pretty nicely right there. I think the only thing that I would add, um, you know, first of all, obviously, the, uh, the participants, uh, enroll voluntarily. They would receive, uh, a packet including a program description, um, a one-page enrollment form and prepaid envelope to, uh, to subscribe. Uh, it's a guaranteed savings program. Um, the ten percent discount will be visible directly on the participant's, um, utility bill, uh, national grid bill, uh, as, uh, as usual. So there's no, like, secondary billing, uh, or anything like that. Everything happens right there to see the discount, there's no fees, uh, of any kind. Participants, um, uh, you know, enroll on a month-to-month basis. So as long as they see the benefits, they, um, they can stay on the program and reap the benefits. Uh, from the municipality's perspective, uh, there's civic contribution that's provided, as we mentioned, for, uh, for every enrollment. Uh, and, uh, that's fifty dollars per. Um, and then another, uh, kind of benefit for the municipality, if they want to pursue it, there's, uh, NYSERDA, which is the government, governing body, uh, for the utilities and overseeing this, uh, community solar process. Uh, they offer grants, uh, to the municipalities, uh, so you can get, uh, clean energy community certified uh, and, um, and receive some grants, uh, you know, as part of this process. Uh, and, uh, yeah, and Manans, uh, already, um, and already enrolled the municipal accounts, uh, into this program. Uh, so that's the, um, that is the project that's going live, uh, at the end of this year. Uh, and it's now also available for residential, um, customers to, uh, to enroll just the same. Uh, we have, uh, yeah, we have five projects, uh, in, uh, in National Grid that are coming up, uh, online over the next six to eight months. Um, so yes, it's, uh, can service about four thousand, um, average-sized residential households. Uh, so there's plenty of capacity. Uh, and we are, we, as a company, we focus on, um, low and moderate income households, you know, kind of the people that could benefit from these, um, from these savings, uh, the most. Uh, so yes, and NYSERDA has, uh, so-called DAC maps, dispatch communities map, uh, map. So we're focusing on those regions and Manans, uh, happens to fall, uh, into, uh, into that, um, that region. So, so yes, so that's kind of the overview, uh, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can someone mute themselves, whoever that is? Is that you, Sasha?
Yes, I apologize, I'm, uh, I'm at an airport.
Now boarding. Uh, so we, we had, uh, we had subscribed to the village's accounts, but because of the power usage, we became an anchor tenant to one of the projects that got delayed in New York. What project was that, Sasha?
So, so the project that was available, it didn't really get delayed. It's, uh, it was just a dual billing project, uh, which, uh, which we didn't want to, uh, to pursue, uh, for you guys at that time. Uh, you, uh, you have priority registration for, uh, for the projects, uh, in Manlius. Uh, it's in the Syracuse area, um, you know, within the National Grid utility territory. It's consolidated billing and you guys will be first enrolled.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so all of the farms that we've talked about, uh, providing power to the, anyone who signs up for this are located in New York, is that right?
Within the National Grid utility territory, um, yeah, correct.
Um, so, so basically, what, what we're looking for the board to agree to today is to allow the village to sign a participation agreement with Solar Simplified to, uh, allow them to basically reach out to Manans customers and, uh, ask if they want to participate in this program and, uh, save on their power supply. And then the village would earn fifty dollars for anyone that does, so.
How, how, how is this advertised? It's just, we're just gonna put out, like, in the activities or?
So what, what we talked about was potentially putting in the activities. They would do a direct mail campaign, the, the example of the letter they would use is in the, in the board folder. Um, and, uh, and they would reach out that way. Um, is that correct, Sasha?
Yeah, that's, uh, yeah, the mailers, uh, are kind of the primary way to communicate it, uh, to the residents, yep. And then anything else that you want to, uh, to post or share with, uh, with the town, that's, that's the support, uh, in those activities.
Facebook and, and so on, so, so, um, you know, it helps the villi- in, in my opinion, it helps the village achieve some climate, uh, climate goals along with the state of New York. Uh, plus it earns the village some money in the referral fees, so.
I'm not opposed to it, I just didn't have access to the folder till today, so I haven't had a chance to read any of it, so I'm not comfortable.
Okay, we can table it, for sure, yeah. All right, so, um, any other questions?
Well, this time.
Okay. Um, so, uh, why don't we table this till next meeting? Yeah.
Overall, though, anything, so I, I appreciate, I, I did it, oh, I, that's my.
Yeah, ask your question.
Uh, yeah, I do al- already have solar on my home, would I still be eligible to sign up for this program?
So unfortunately, that is the only thing that excludes you from the program. If you already have solar panels on your home, then this, uh, unfortunately, I'm designed for, uh, you, but, um, the vast majority of people unfortunately does not have the ability, uh, to put panels on their roof. You know, the big population is the renters, uh, that, you know, otherwise wouldn't, wouldn't have that, uh, ability to participate in solar. Uh, so yeah, so that's, um, unfortunately, won't work for you.
Okay. Let me double it off there. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll talk about this the next meeting.
Sounds, like, sounds decent to begin with.
So Solar Simplified, we initially had started to talk about a company called Nelmet.
Yes.
And they were more, they did not actually own the farms that, that they've been marketed. They were more of just a marketing company and that's how this, this conversation started. Um, and then, uh, Solar Simplified is a, is a much larger, uh, literally, they build the farms and then market them, market power. So, um, they, they captured that right?
Uh, yeah, sounds about right.
So anyway, that's how we got there, so, all right, we'll talk about it on the sixth.
Sounds good.
Um, the holiday.
Great, and, uh, then we'll hop off for now, unless anybody has any more questions.
If we get any questions, I'll forward them along.
Appreciate it, thank you, guys. Bye-bye.
Thanks. Have a safe flight.
Thank you.
Uh, the holiday train is coming back to Manans, very exciting. Uh, Don, do you have any, if no, or Kevin?
Kevin, it's coming. Coming Black Friday.
Yeah, Black Friday.
Um, it's gonna be here around four o'clock, so four forty-five. Um, we're gonna be doing is, we're gonna be blocking off the streets, going to it. Yes, we're blocking off an air road.
Totally?
Yeah, because.
Except for local traffic.
Local traffic, because the problem is, is that the people lined up on that side of the train were on their way down to jump past, you know, Jones's Ford, so, um, we're gonna, but the notices will go out to all those residents, but we're gonna block off the other side of the street also. Um, we spoke to Castleman and they are gonna allow us to have people park there and they, we're gonna get a bus company to bus them to the, probably Clifford Road because we can't get them, we, the problem we had, we had going up an air road with all the people there, it was, it turned into, they couldn't turn around. So we're gonna have them go up Clifford at the end of Station Street and then they can walk over that way.
Uh, is, is there enough parking at Castleman or, oh, okay.
And then, um.
Cause I just remembered, that was quite a bottleneck, uh, two years ago.
And when they, and the people leaving Castleman are gonna go, stop, north, they're gonna go north.
Okay.
They're, they're only gonna be able to go one way, they're not gonna be able to. And then they go up around three seventy-eight if they have to or whatever, you know?
Oh.
Um.
So we're gonna have a meeting.
We're hoping, uh, hopefully by the end of the week or not, uh, early next week.
To discuss some of the details, um, about, uh, about the, exactly how it's gonna work, where's, you know, the whole super nuts procedures.
Yeah.
We have county police and waterway police and the explorers and the Canadian Pacific Police will be there. They were, they're the, the main ones there. And it's also gonna be a food drive.
So, yeah.
So we have to decide which food bank we're gonna give the food to. Cause they will also donate a thousand dollars towards it.
Right, so and this time, we're gonna have two trucks to collect the.
Yeah, so we truck on, by the park and one down in Molly's driveway. But, uh, the problem we had last year, last time, was that we had the one truck and everything was on the one side and people couldn't get around, so.
Can I make another suggestion, that maybe you put a truck down in the Castleman lot so people don't have to lug it all the way?
That's a good point, that's a good point.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. Boy, you're just full of ideas today.
That's right. Yeah, that's a good.
Yeah.
Um, and we're gonna have someone standing there helping across the road.
Okay.
Crosswalk?
Yeah.
The only thing, that other thing, it just, because the way it falls is that's Thanksgiving, the day after Thanksgiving, so it's much notice to the residents on Manans as possible.
Yes.
And whatever other streets are gonna be.
Yes. They will get flyers delivered to the houses.
What's that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, the meeting coming up, we'll hopefully try to iron up as much details as we can and as soon as we can give that out, we will, you know, push it out as fast as possible. We just wanna make sure, you know, all those things are ironed out, blocked out. Obviously, we, we, there's a lot to learn from the last time.
Yeah.
Uh, I think we've, uh, everybody that kind of experienced that has some sort of input to put in, so.
Encourage people to walk if they can, it's, uh.
And we'll, yes, and, um, and advising people of the public transportation staff that are along there to, to encourage that. Um, which was one of the thoughts that we had, you know, encouraging them to use the twenty-two bus or the, uh, or the, you know, the rapid bus or whatever, because, um, so.
Um, I mean, I, I, you know, I'm sure that the logistics aren't there for, but it would be nice if, you know, we could collect people from, you know, Sage Hill and Brewster Estates and people who are not in easy walking distance of, of that, uh, to save on people driving to Castleman and then having to be bused or walking, probably, again, I'm sure it's not logistical, but, uh.
Nice drive.
Come to the Sage Trail.
That's, well, I, I, I did that, uh, last time.
Um, okay. There are two Albany County Planning Board letters that I need the board's authorization to sign just to show receipt. Is that what? Is that? That's kind of what these are? Just to confirm we received them? So the first is for the Clifford Road project. I just need a motion for allowing me to sign this letter saying that we received their basic recommendation, which is to defer to local consideration.
Move to approve allowing the mayor to sign the Albany County Planning Board letter regarding Clifford Road.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, and then the same for the project at ninety-eight Menand Road. It's again the same, the same thing.
You mean ninety-six?
Ninety-seven, ninety-eight.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, so I will sign those. I wanted to bring the board up to date on our healthcare plan. The New York State Rate Organization has allowed CDPHP for the plan that we have to raise the rate by thirteen point six percent, which is not sustainable and not possible. So Bill and I met with our insurance rep, Brandon. What's his last name?
True.
True, true. And we came up with a creative solution that actually may be better and much more cost effective and practically break break that down to almost flat. So I'll be sharing more about that once we fine tune that proposal. The CDPHP Platinum Plan compared year to year was the best of the options. Some of the plans were up nineteen percent. So it was a pretty crazy year for health insurance and the villages is no different. So I'll be sharing more details about that coming up.
Do we need to have beauty coming?
So we may do an insurance workshop. I think that'd be helpful for everyone. So, yeah. She is recovering from surgery at some time, so.
Although her son is very good.
Yep. Did you want to discuss our CHIPS funding?
You want to talk about thirty-five? You got, you know, you're going off the script. Thirty-five for.
Thirty-five Broadway. So the Soldier on Project is or has applied for a pilot. This has been something we've been talking about for five plus years. So the hearing on the pilot is rescheduled to October twenty-third to talk about their proposal. Basically, the the schedule of taxes will go from pay basically as a vacant lot, they pay the total tax is seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And they're proposing that it go to twenty thousand five hundred dollars. The school's piece of that is sixty-two point two five percent. The village's piece is just under eighteen percent. And then there's a county and town piece. But basically, you know, it is a subsidized project.
Could you give that breakdown again?
Sure, I'll actually give you a copy of this.
Okay.
Okay. I'll put it in the in the board, in the in the documents. It's been circulated to the school, to the town, to the county's office for consideration. But there's a hearing, like I said, on the twenty-third at the Colony Town Halla Hunt on Route Nine. CHIPS funding?
CHIPS, we got a, for the first time in twenty years, they increased us by fifteen thousand dollars flat. So we're getting seven, we're gonna be getting seventy-three thousand and change for CHIPS, but all the other paid New York and all that state flat.
Okay. Today, we received notice that we are getting a five thousand dollar grant for meeting some of our climate initiative goals. So today I submitted to reimburse or to submit that project. So of the twenty-six thousand dollars for the windows, they're gonna give us five thousand dollars of that money. So that's for doing things like becoming climate smart, the EV charger stations that that we're still waiting on on some documentation from doing the benchmarking initiative that we did. So so hey, we got free five thousand dollars. Oh, all of the LED conversions for the buildings and for the streetlights. So that was good news. I think that's all I had. Actually, no, wait. We're looking at a new payroll system. We've been struggling with paychecks flex ever since it converted from the previous paycheck system. We had a very good meeting with a company called AccuData and they gave us an excellent proposal. And it's a system that Verizon uses and has no problems with and actually provides a lot of good reporting that will save Cheryl a lot of time. So we're exploring that as an option. More on that coming up. That's it for me. We've got a couple of events. Do you want to talk about that? The events coming up? We got the Fall Festival.
Yeah. The Fall Festival is gonna be
Saturday.
Saturday. But they, it's gonna be changed from the park.
Maybe. We're still, tomorrow, we're gonna make the decision.
Okay. We're looking to possibly move the venue to the new shed at the farmer's market.
It's supposed to rain all weekend, so.
But they've been wrong about that before.
They have. So that's why tomorrow we're gonna make the decision. And then the Trump tree is twenty-ninth. And if if it rains then too, we're gonna try and use the the new shed at the at Farmer's Market instead of inside.
Yeah. Sounds good.
There is a another meeting about the rebuilding of the Menance Troy Bridge. That meeting is Thursday, October twenty-sixth at Hudson Valley Ballmer Telecommunications Building. It's at six to eight, if anyone wants to participate in that.
You said, you said what time?
Six to eight.
Six to eight, yeah.
I will be there. And that's all I have. Does anyone on the board have anything to report? You wanted to do the?
You want me to talk about the thing?
Yeah.
Okay. On December eleventh, there will be a our annual menorah lighting ceremony, rather than taking place in Ganser Smith Park as it has for the past three years due to slippery surfaces and whatnot, we've decided to move it here. Rabbi Mortified Rubin will be the, will preside over that. And I encourage, regardless of your religious affiliation, come check it out. It's a great, great event. Goodie bags for all, food for all. Bring kids, bring bring family and enjoy some nice time and fellowship.
Five P M, sir?
Uh, five o'clock P M, yes. And it'll be in the Menance activities. It is, yeah. It'll be in the Menance activities closer to the. I believe it's not a board meeting night. Last year it was one where we was a board meeting night, so we had fun there and then fun over here afterward.
Anyone else want to report anything?
The paving on Menand Road is almost complete. We're gonna address some issues tomorrow.
Yeah, what time? Please let me know. If you can do it at ten.
Well, I gotta call them.
Yeah, if I, I don't have to be there, so just go ahead.
Yeah. So with with Callan in?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll call you. Is I here or you'll hear?
Okay, now we're gonna do public comment. Members of the public have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. Let's go. Go ahead, Bill. We got your, we got your notes from.
I'll just only read a few of them.
Okay.
Now, for gender, welfare, public safety, inequality, and life efficient reason, I support replacement steam traps for our village office building. How many steam traps does the village?
It's actually completed and there was four. They didn't have to do, it was supposed to be fifteen of them, but they only had to do four of them.
And it and it works much better.
Yeah, I'm glad. Now, what about the other building, other village buildings? How many steam traps?
They don't have steam air routes as I wanted. The village office bill on that steam.
All right, I didn't, sorry, I didn't know it. Now, another thing you need, people need to know, there's a fire hybrid that's still being covered by brush weeds and other plants. This fire hydrant's located on Canal Street, well, it's Canal Road, but I call it Canal Street, at Market Road Junction next to One Dead End Sign near True Value Hardware Store. I already reported this problem to the place. Who's responsible to remove the brush weeds and plants and other things? Is it our village?
When they can, they're they're doing leaves and all stuff.
Well, just letting you know about it now. It's been like it for several months and something needs to be done about. Now, one thing, I observed two utility poles on the east side of Station Street, which is the area between Menand and Clifford Roads, are being covered by weeds, vines, and brush, plus they gotta be removed. Remove from both utility poles as soon as possible. I couldn't read their numbers on there because I guess they're covered with plants, brush, weeds. So I did report this problem to the Menance Police. And by the way, I'm glad that Menand Road is largely completed, which I, you know that I've been raising the issue about our village streets in the lower part of Menance being enforced ridiculously. Now, Crocker Creek, yes, I would be glad to participate in passing out candy. In fact, I brought some recent peanut butter candy, mostly white ones. Now, I don't know about the Fall Family Festival, but whether I'm gonna be there or not, because this coming Saturday, I'll be working up at Connecticut County Airport in Glenville, but I'll try to come for only for a short time.
Okay.
All right, thanks for letting me speak and I hope you appreciate my issues of concern.
Thanks, Bill.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Go ahead, Sinead.
Couple of points here. I'm Cindy Price. I live on North Lyons Avenue here in the village. Two things concerning the advisory board. In the past, or just in general, that should have both sides, really, of people. My point of view, like it on the record, that more than just one side needs to be presented on this advisory board for fusion recovery. Second comment, trying to talk fast here, is I'm really concerned about the area that's next to Fusion. It's, I haven't seen a sign out front, but I think it's a golf cart storage unit.
We're, yeah, we're addressing, we're addressing that.
Okay, and a truck school. I counted today, it was over two hundred and fifty golf carts there when I was over there. There was one getting onto a pickup truck, so I don't know what they were doing with that one. Pardon me?
Three forty-nine.
Okay. When I was over there briefly.
We're addressing that. In fact, there's a case that is before the court that is being heard. Sixteenth, I think, is the rehearing or?
Yeah, it's confirmed today.
Yeah.
Okay, I just don't think that we're really trying to do all these nice.
When it came tonight, there were four tractor trailers parked there as well.
Well, that's down the other one. This is the golf cart thing.
No, this is right next to it today. This is right next to where the golf carts, and they're not supposed to be parked in the tractor trailers here.
Okay, yeah, there's, they're both.
They say it's for testing only, not for storage.
Well, they stay there overnight, so I guess they got the storm somewhere, right? Yeah.
Exactly.
Is that the landlord that owns the other buildings too? Is that the same landlord?
Yes.
Okay, it's like a slumlord. Okay. Excuse me, I think I am done.
Thanks, Cindy.
Okay, I'm Chuck Price. Good evening, esteemed board members. I had previously written to you about the zoning decision for four forty-four Broadway. Without a response from anyone but the mayor, I appreciate your response. The collective lack of response is pretty disconcerting and disappointing.
We should check your email again because I did respond to you.
Okay, I did. Thank you. I did not see that. So thank you for letting me know. The mayor and village attorney play key roles in the initial zoning decision. And in my viewpoint, this creates a conflict of interest that compromises their ability to provide unbiased input moving forward. And I think there is an ethical responsibility here to recuse themselves from an effort to revisit the zoning. I think the board needs to formally acknowledge this, that there is an inherent bias, and not turn a blind eye to their vested interests that they failed to recuse themselves. On June twelfth of twenty twenty-three, the village sent a letter to Oasis that highlighted irregularities in their certification process. And the applicant failed to properly consult state and local authorities, made false claims of community support, and did not engage neighboring municipalities as required. And I've not heard, and at some point I would like to hear, what action the village is taking following Oasis's dismissal of these valid concerns. Numerous residents have voiced significance concerns about the risk of public safety if an OTP is approved. For that reason, I continue to strongly urge this board to reexamine the zoning decision for the property before this certification is finalized. By doing so, it will prevent the opening of a non-conforming operation that does not adhere to local zoning regulations. The board's duty is to the public, not to the mayor, not to the village attorney, and in the interest of transparency and accountability, not to provide cover for officials with clear conflicts of interest. So I think immediate action is needed to address this concerning situation. The community expects more from its elected representatives. Again, I like both of you guys. I don't want you to take this personally, but I think that this is a valid point that I'm making.
Anyone else?
Good news, Allison, on Jones Court. Two weeks ago, I came home and you were at my mailbox, mayor. And I was quite surprised to see you. Didn't even recognize you. I'm very concerned that I have given you a copy of the covenant, the deed, or that entire subdivision on Jones Court. And you said you would take care of it.
I said I would look into it.
I gave you a copy of it that day. I'm concerned that you personally took an interest and showed up in person. Doesn't that seem odd? When the person sitting next to you is the grandson of the neighbor that is complaining about the mailbox. All right. In addition, I have complained to the building inspector about the fence that the person on nine Jones Court next door has put up and asked that it be taken down and that they be fined for every day it's not taken down. And I was told by the building inspector that he was told by you not to do anything.
That's not correct.
Well, that's what he told me. All right. So I gave you a copy of the deed for that subdivision. It says, no on-street parking. So the people in house number one got the village to put up signs and say, no parking. Person in number eight, the previous owner, wanted to put up an above-ground pool. And in the deed, it says, no above-ground pools. I remember talking with Don about this. The people finally sold their house and moved because it was enforced. They couldn't put up an above-ground pool. You're not allowed to have livestock. You're not allowed to have a clothesline. You're not allowed to have a fence that extends beyond the rear of the house. So a fence on the side of the house or in the front of the house is illegal. I'm asking that you take action and have the fence removed.
Is it a permanently installed fence?
It's a fence. It doesn't say anything in the deed about whether it's permanent or not. It's been there since May fourteen. I have asked repeatedly in writing from the building inspector and finally told by a person, it was told by you not to do anything.
That's incorrect.
When is it going to be dealt with? You've had a week, two weeks now since I gave you personally a copy of the deed for that entire subdivision.
I said I would look into it and we're still looking into it. You also, correct me if I'm wrong, you also sent me a complaint about a. You also, correct me if I'm wrong, you also sent me a complaint about a child playing on a toy. And you told me that it was a motorized vehicle.
It is.
It runs on a battery.
That's right.
It is a toy. It is not an, it is not a motorbike.
Okay, so it's okay now to go sledding down that street?
We're not.
Because it's a toy.
You have public comment, you can make a comment. Go ahead.
Does it make sense to allow children to ride a motorized vehicle? I'm sorry, an electric motor is a motor. Is it a lot, is it, is it allowable for them to ride a vehicle that goes four to six miles an hour, which is faster than some of those parents and grandparents can run on a street that has two blind curbs? Okay?
It seems to me, it seems to me that.
Saw that person with their child in the center of the road by the time I got my camera out to take a picture because the vision of that corner was blocked by a parked vehicle. But then again, there's a second blind curb where actually Nick had a car accident a year ago, hitting someone coming out.
I've never hit anyone on Jones Court before. And how about we discuss him speeding around the corner, which is very dangerous. So no need to take this out on myself or on the mayor.
I think you should recuse yourself. That was a very good point you made previously. You have a vested interest in this.
How so? Public safety? Is that vested interest?
These are, these are neighbor disputes. It's apparent to, to me.
That you have a, a bias towards the board and myself and my grandparents, that there's no need for that to be. You speed around the corner multiple times.
No.
It seems like this, wait a minute. It seems like this.
Call me, I've been speeding. Your grandmother says I'm speeding.
Because you've been caught speeding.
Speeding, and you know what? I showed videos to the police and they said, you know what videos are good? Because I was not speeding.
It's not the board who makes decisions about you or complain about your neighbor or your neighbors complain about you. That's not what we're here for.
I'm asking you to enforce the deed for the subdivision.
So Steve, you want to talk about the village's responsibility and neighborhood complaints?
Yeah, so, uh, actually, I was the village attorney when Jones Court, uh, with the dignums, Mike and Bob Dignan.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Sure. Um, I was a, I was a village attorney when Mike and Bob.
Steve Raikis.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Steve Raikis.
Okay.
Um, I, I apologize. Um, I was a village attorney when Mike and Bob Dignan submitted the, uh, the proposal, the development proposal.
Right.
I think it was a subdivision proposal for, uh, for Jones Court. Uh, the deed restrictions were not a condition that the village placed on those particular lots. Those deed restrictions were placed by Bob and Mike as part of the development. So those deed restrictions run with the land. In terms of the fence, I'm not familiar with the fence, but I'm, I'm just gonna speak generally. If there's a violation of those deed restrictions, for example, if that neighbor had built an above-ground pool, um, that might not be a good, yeah, I don't know if you need a permit for an above-ground pool. Let's assume some neighbor did something that was in violation of the deed restrictions that did not need a building permit.
Like a permanent fence?
Like a fence, like a, like a fence. I don't think it requires a building permit. It doesn't provide, the deed restrictions do not provide the village, the board or the building department with the ability to go and say, you're in violation of the deed restrictions, take down the fence. We can't force or order them to take down the fence. What it does permit is you or any resident of Jones Court who is also subject to the same deed restrictions to bring an action against them, send a letter to them saying, you need, you're in violation of the deed restriction. And if they don't, if they don't adhere to those deed restrictions, gives you the right to, to bring them to court, to have them take it down.
And the court would be what? Here?
Which court? Um.
Or would be the town of town.
I don't, you know, I, I, I would guess that you would, you could probably bring something here in village court. Uh, some type of small claim against them, uh, civil action against them here in the village court and have one of the village justices here.
All right, so in addition, the deed also says that lots three and four and lots nine and ten are right-of-way. So vehicles can turn around. All right, and it was important enough for the village to amend that because there was an error that said it was two and three, not three and four. All right, so they amended, they corrected the mistake. So if the right-of-way has been permanently blocked off with posts by one of the people, is that a violation?
I'm not comfortable saying yes or no, because I'm not familiar with the situation. I don't recall, I don't remember. An amendment, I don't remember the issue regarding the right-of-way or whether or not it was changed. But if that's a deed restriction again, that's between private property owners and as opposed to.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, even though it requires the mailman to pull up to the mailbox and then back up while children are out playing in those vehicles, it just doesn't make sense that the village would not enforce this.
Yeah, I don't, I'll be honest with you. I, I just don't recall what the right-of-way issue was or if there, there was one.
I have a copy if you want to see it.
And when you're talking about posts, are you talking about the driveway reflector markers? Those are posts?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, a separate topic?
Sure.
Advisory boards. My experience with advisory boards is that they bring in all interested parties. If it was an environmental issue about the application of pesticides, you would bring in manufacturers, you would bring in applicators, you would bring in environmental groups. And that way, you've got all the interested parties, all the attendants being brought to light. So you're making a forward decision.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Um, John Olden has a couple of questions.
Sure.
The board should consider having a budding neighbor that's been involved with fusion. And John, I'm not, you could speak, what, what you're asking about the notification system?
Yeah, sorry. No, I just commented and I was just curious. Like, I know it's just used for water things and the mayor commented on Facebook. I, I just, I was really just looking if we can be used for other things. Like, there's a lot of other things, other, I think it's great for water notifications, but it's like, there's some kind of, you know, I commute out of the area and come back in. It's nice to know what's going on traffic-wise, thinking things like that. I'm sure there's other uses. But I don't know if you guys have to pay per use for it or something like that, and that's why.
No, we use it, we use it for when there's snow emergencies or if there's like, uh, like the concert, an audition example, what would I think we use for was when we had to cancel a concert in park because of the, of a severe storm, we put a notice about like that. But we don't put it out like if, if we don't know, like, if there's like seven eighty-sevens closed down because of a car accident. Yeah, we don't put it out for that. We can get that New York alert.
Okay.
We use it for other, you know, if there was like a situation, if there was a police matter and they, they had to, um, notify the residents to stay indoors, we can do that for, we, we also could do it for that.
That's great. Okay. No, that, that helps. I think that.
Is that it, John?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, John. Bill, go ahead.
Bill Navin, Wolfman Avenue, okay, you don't know. Um, so the agenda, and I appreciate the work that goes into an agenda. They're hard to set up sometimes and I'm fully aware of that. Boards tend to move public comment to the bottom of agendas to dissuade people from speaking or dissuade them from staying.
I think that's an unfair assumption, Bill. So please, don't.
Let me, oh, I, it has, it has a place to go. Give me a chance to, to finish out the speak, right?
Okay.
Um, the reason I mention that is it's difficult when the online agenda isn't posted until Thursday evening and Friday morning to come up with questions that may be submitted by noon for cutoff to make a, a, a board meeting presentation. I, I have the ability to attend the meetings. I, I, you know, not everyone can. Mondays are difficult. There's other things going on. Is there a way to possibly get the agenda out to the public prior to, you know, the, the day before they're due uh, to make comments on, maybe three days or five days out? Um, a lot of these transfers are, are, you know, you know what's happening transfer-wise and we kind of know what's going on in the agenda. Not to say you can't add something, but some of these topics do require some, some comment. And if the public had the chance to see it, possibly more writing comments would come before the noon cutoff on Friday because they came to actually attend the meeting. And not to take away from, I'm just going from the past. There's other meetings we tend where they bump the public comments at the bottom to dissuade. Not that that's what happened here. Prior comments were made in the beginning of the meeting. Perhaps someone's comment about advisory board could have been brought up if you were going to move forward with that, and maybe that's something the board didn't think about. Perhaps there's other comments that people in the public have that the board did not, you're fine. That people have something that's offer, suggest, say, geez, I didn't think about that, you know, let's discuss this further. I'm just mentioning it. If there's a way to get information prior, it would be helpful.
I would love to have the agendas, uh, pro, you know, way out in advance. In fact, we just started, uh, to, to, to do a little bit of that. Uh, for instance, the November sixth agenda is already in the works for some of the things that we don't. It's, it's very difficult to forecast everything, um, and because of the public notification requirements that we have, it's, 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 it's challenging. I mean, uh, so your point is noted. It, it's, it's, it's difficult.
Thank you.
So, I mean, perhaps.
At least responding to the, the comment.
Perhaps one of the issues that we can do is to allow comments till noon the, the day of the meeting.
Monday, with the Monday.
You know, allow, so that somebody has the weekend to look at the agenda and, and, uh.
We can, we can look and, I mean, we can do the agenda on the Wednesday before. It's just, because it's just a tentative agenda. We have to add something. We just added that. We'll add that the day of the meeting.
So the problem is if, it's not like a document that has the ability to flash update. It's a static document, right, that, that we have to submit. So it's not like as we add to it and change it, it can then reflect on the website that it's been changed, right? We'd have to.
Because it's, because it has to be, it has to be posted, it has to go to the newspaper, it's gotta go to the two boards that we posted on the boards and it goes on the website.
I wasn't looking for you to fix it tonight.
Okay.
Listen, I wanted to bring it to attention so people have an opportunity to participate.
We actually been talking about it, because we started doing that, like, we started working on next agendas already being, being started, so.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, uh, we have we have legal matters. Yes, we have two legal matters for executive session. I have a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session to handle two legal matters.
Have a second. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Right? I didn't see the agenda listed.
Say that again?
I don't know.
I, I said.
Yours.
I appreciate that, because I, I thought I got it.
No, no, not at all. And I, I would never do that with an email.
I don't know why I was there.
Congratulations, you're in order, sir.